Welcome to the United States Department of Public Safety. We're the same congregation, under God, and we're just... Well, welcome to the last school board meeting of the school year. Next time we meet, school board. So, let's see. Item number three, changes or additions to the agenda? Item four, consent agenda?
I move the board to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second. It's been moved in second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No one cares. Item five, personnel. Item A, approve Gary Flood, youth camp principal.
I move the board to approve the hire of Gary Flood, youth camp principal.
I'll second. It's been moved in second to approve the hire of Gary Flood, youth camp principal. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, no one cares. Item five, approve the hire of Sylvia Hopeland, K-12 science teacher. I move the board to approve the hire of Sylvia Hopeland, K-12 science teacher. It's been moved in second to approve the hire of Sylvia Hopeland, K-12 science teacher. Is there any discussion?
Just a point of clarification. We say K-12 science teachers who distinguish between from the youth camp, but it's a middle, high school position. Just in case there's any questions about that.
Welcome home group member here. Okay, it's been moved in second to approve the hire of Sylvia Hopeland, K-12 science teacher. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, no one cares. Item five C, approve the hire of Rachel Swamalaw, UROC coordinator.
I move the board to approve the hire of Rachel Swamalaw, UROC coordinator.
I'll second. It's been moved in second to approve the hire of Rachel Swamalaw, UROC coordinator. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, no one cares. Item five B, acknowledge the resignation of Rob Dalton, middle school volleyball coach.
I move the board to acknowledge the resignation of Rob Dalton, middle school volleyball coach.
That's fair.
It's been moved in second to acknowledge the resignation of Rob Dalton, middle school volleyball coach. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, no one cares. Item B, acknowledge the resignation of Lamar Wobba, JV boys basketball coach. I move the board to acknowledge the resignation of Lamar Wobba, JV boys basketball coach.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second to acknowledge the resignation of Lamar Wobba, JV boys basketball coach. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, no one cares. No one signed up for public comment, is there any other more to it upon a time? Okay. No one finish business, new business. First reading board policy six, seven, zero, zero.
Okay. So, our audience folks here, first reading, we usually present the policy, talk about the policy, think hard in a month, and then we come back the next month for approval. We want to go that way. I know. No pressure, though. Why, Steve? Maybe just smack. Well, do it again. Want to talk about facilities first? I'm gonna have to somehow break that into parts. How about we do the facilities first?
Okay.
Because it won't.
Talk about facilities.
Okay, so we have a pretty active facilities committee. We've been meeting once a month, well, actually sometimes twice, for the last, I'd say, a year and a half. I've never had that committee up again. Anthony Lee's got boy, agreed to come back and be the chair. He has probably a 20-year history of facilities, so we know, say, as none of us on the committee do, you know, where to find them in the blinders and where the blinders are in the back office. So, that's been really fortunate to have Scott on board. So, what we've done here is we've tried to lay out a facilities plan for the next five years. And what everyone keep in mind, it is a plan, even though we're asking the board to approve it, you know, by tomorrow, it could be outdated. Because as every one of these things gets done, or something new happens or breaks, then there's another topic. So, this is kind of an ongoing fluid document. Just to sort of work through this, we first started and said, okay, what years does FinFest occur? Because if FinFest is going on, it's pretty difficult to be having a major construction project. So, we always kind of want to keep that in mind, it's in every other year cycle as far as FinFest. But just some things we've been working on, and as we go through this, we'll start to see it gets redundant, because if you haven't yet changed it, or we're still thinking about it, or it's in the planning phase, you're going to see it on the subsequent years as the plan moves along. So, the first one, and these aren't necessarily in order of priority on the page, just looking at them as projects before focusing on where this is the 15, 16 school year which we are in. Lions Park is one, for example, that's in the past, the Lions Club actually managed the park, which is why it's called the Lions Park. They no longer exist here anymore. Another club took it over, and then subsequently handed it back to the district. So, it's a hard property to manage. It's obviously off-campus, off of our footprint, it's district property. You know, the access is wide open, they're building out there, people have gone out and vandalized things. It's hard for us to keep a good eye on it. We do have staff that go out there and check, but, you know, little things happen that we don't really know about. We would like to be able to find a long-term solution for that. There aren't a lot of active clubs anymore in the area that can go out and do the kind of work that's required to be done out there. So, we do want to keep it on our radar. It is a challenge for us. We don't have a lot of manpower, we're just camp out there and release it all day long, but continuing to look for solutions. LED lighting is something that we've done some replacement. We put LED lighting in the district office and some of the other work areas. It is a little more expensive, but the cost savings over time. We've been working with the PVD to get some close on whether the cost will do more lighting. Sometimes they have grievances going on. So, that's something we've wanted to keep on the radar. When we do add new lighting, we want to make sure we consider the LED lighting. We've had aging propane, excuse me, water heaters recently, or replaced kitchen and locker room units. Those are 20 years old, so we didn't feel like we should wait for them to break down before we did something. Exterior siding, a lot of this remodel was done, it's called LP board, or Louisiana Pacific siding. It has a bad track record. So, we're doing ongoing replacement of some of those boards as needed. Obviously, the small mechanical issues, which aren't so small if you're in the classroom, heating and cooling, it's either freezing cold or very hot in the classrooms. Kids can probably testify to that on some days, it's just downright uncomfortable. It was worse back in the day when we went to school, because we had a lot of skylights. Even worse, so, it's better than back then. Classroom situations is something we always talk about. You know, we continue to assess how much space we have. We've run about 40 kids over the last couple of years. We know we've managed before, but there are different academic requirements now that are required. So, you know, we need rooms for kids to go quietly, or de-escalate, or have one-on-one intervention. So, we realize that our footprint is the same, that the demands for rooms have grown. Another example of that is when the kids break out in their mandrakes, they need a place to go. So, at this time, we had a classroom that was being used for CVA. We converted it last year back into a classroom. We're in the process of having conversations with what's called ECAP, which is our Early Childhood Program, because they also occupy a room. And, you know, with our numbers continuing to grow, we need those spaces back. So, we did meet with the ECAP group and tell them that, you know, we really need that space. We can't continue to house them. So, it's a tough issue, but we're going to be working through that. Septic systems, we have two aging systems, we continue to monitor them. We aren't of the mindset to just go tear them out and replace them, you know, but we are keeping an eye on them and trying to keep the healthy financial situation. So, if something does go wrong, one was installed in 69 and the other one in 92. So, aging systems. And we've had different, people make different comments about, well, if that goes, you will need a system like a water treatment, like a beauty. Others say, well, no, you can do it with a mound. So, you know, you don't really know until it happens, but we have talked about how we can transport the stuff to a tank while it gets fixed, should there be a septic gutter. But if something randomly monitors every year, you have to pull it out and check it. Visitor parking, we are trying to move away from having parking back here. We call it the courtyard. There are all kinds of pipes and drains under that area. It takes a lot of abuse. We seal the concrete every year, but you can kind of see it's already maybe caused an alligator. So, you know, the least amount of traffic we can have on that, the better. You don't want to be driving over here and just be fighting some things that you can't help with. So, ideally, and this was a concept that was pulled in several years ago, we'd like to do parking out front here. Yes, we go here more where the flagpole is. We have a system where, you know, the buses can come out this way, cars can come in that way, they both exit over here. We've been working with the Department of Transportation on that. We were pretty hopeful in the beginning, when they sent us a hundred-page analysis that we needed to do. Said, okay, well, we've been talking about this for a few years, is there something a little more simple? And then they said, oh, wait a minute, there might be another way we can help, and if we haven't heard anything, probably for a month. But that's a process that's going to move slowly, because they want to do some kind of study to check the traffic patterns and everything, so. So, but we're continuing to work on it, because our ideal goal, we could get parking out of this backwood. We have kids, you know, that go from here to van or shop. We don't want them going through the parking lot. We may either use the hallway or walk along the edge of the building. They walk along the edge of the building, they're going right outside the classroom, and they don't like to touch the walls as they go. So, we're just trying to do some other alternatives to have a little better situation. And also, something people say to us a lot is, how do you get in this building? It's not clearly marked, obvious entry. If you aren't from here and you don't know where to go, and you haven't done it many times, it's... People have a hard time like this. It's not always a bathroom, but in general, it's not something we want to continue. Weight room, we have on here, and as we will see this as an ongoing, we just, the weight room is pretty small. We have a lot of kids interested in weightlifting. You know, it's not a situation where you can put half your kids in the weight room and half in the gym, because you can't have it supervised. So, that's something you'll see kind of repeatedly on here. Those are things that are on the plate for this year that we've been working on. A lot of those do transfer over into 2016, 17. Not bad. Cover play area. If you haven't heard, thank you. We did secure a grant for that from the Office of Superintendent Public Instruction, just short of $200,000. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that later, but we are needing, working through that process right now, so I'm going to give a larger update on that later. But ideally, according to the grant timelines, that will be completed in one year from June. So, we're heavily under the gun for that project. We will keep looking until we can go on further. Okay, so 2016, 17, we call it the Bokeh Building, van room, shop. It's also known as the 57 Building, 58, I guess officially, but that's when it was built. So, our theory is, if you had a house of your own that you built in 57 or 58, you probably would have done some renovations by now. Building isn't needed for renovations. We feel like the best way to approach that is with the capital projects bond. That means it has to pass by, there are 60% plus one. We have to have a, well, some majority, but it's not simply, super, super majority passed that. We had a guy, Carter, his name, he came down from OSPI at the beginning of May, and we did a walkthrough of the building, about half of the facilities committee members, and just looked at some possible upgrades. Essentially, there's a state match for that kind of building, because it's considered classroom space, so the two classrooms in this case, giving a van room and a shop. So, the amount of square footage that's available has a state match. So, let's say hypothetically, it costs $1 million to build, you know, renovate those two rooms. The state match right now is not, don't think of match as equal, but it's about 47%. So, what that means is if we successfully pass along, our citizens' taxpayers would pay $530,000, and state can contribute $470,000. So, it's about hats. So, ideally, that's how we would approach that building, because it does qualify for that type of fund. Somebody may say, well, why don't we do that with this cover play area slash gym slash... Well, that doesn't qualify for state match funding, so it's kind of a loophole on the, as far as the money goes there. But you could pass your own bond for something like that. So, we planned this, we've started on the process of that. We want to be getting more current numbers, but ideally, we want to start laying the groundwork for that next school year. And there's a lot that goes into that, obviously, you have to, you have someone, have an architect, draw out what it looks like, price it out, figure how much it is. You have to have a logging company, you know, architects. It's not something in this you can just go, well, we don't want to hire Home Depot to do this. You have to go out, you have to secure bids, there's all kinds of rules and laws, and things you can't and can't do. I'm not sure if that's the main reason. Another thing we're focusing on is, we did what's called a study and survey of OALBAP, OSPI sponsored that, we wrote a grant for it. And it's a book about this, that basically are building conditions. And one of the things they talk about is when the remodel was done, the ductwork is fiberglass. And they suggest that you move away from that and go with the more of a sheet metal, because over time, fiberglass can break down, and you're putting fibers into your air quality. We do have them checked, they look to be in good shape, but sometimes those micro particles aren't easy to see either. So, facilities can maybe talk about possibly, if you go out for a bond, you know, maybe make it like a fire or life safety type of bond, where we address some of those, the building's physical features, which obviously include the shop. We'll see septic system on there again, because that's just note to self, you know, even if it appears to be more compliant, we continue to monitor and check it at regular intervals. So, we, you know, have to look against notices, something shouldn't go wrong. Flooring, you'll notice some of the carpeting, especially around the ceiling, and some of our panels out here, tile, it's all automated over the day. Got a lid on the flooring, it's probably been three or four years ago now. Pretty expensive. It's about, I think, a couple hundred thousand to do that. Facilities committee thinking was, you know, maybe more as an as-needed basis. You know, the elementary wing is in need. Again, we're trying to tie these projects into what else is going on in the building. If you have, you know, winter break is usually not long enough to do carpets, and you put carpet in, it often smells pretty strong in the beginning. So, we feel like that has to be a summer project, like every other year's FinFest. So, if we get additional gym space, maybe FinFest could be there rather than, you know... But anyway, so, just lots to think about in doing anything. Communications, mostly this one is in regards to the phone system. If you call in here from the outside, you may experience a lot of drop calls. People probably don't like us very much, because, you know, it happens a lot where they're just not there anymore. And we haven't pressed any buttons, and they're jerking floors. So, that's something that's going to have to be upgraded. We've kind of pushed it out a year, hoping that we can get along, but, you know. If nothing else, it's an incredible useless. Classroom situation, again, what are our numbers look like? What's our space, what are our needs? So, somebody's now here to see, they're going to start to repeat themselves, because we're thinking a little part of the mountain road. Visitor parking, we don't want to take that off the play. Lions Park, we go to find someone to partner with. Weight room, gym, we may or may not have a storage unit by then. We are hoping to at least have a practice facility, get kids out, moving around on rainy days, and then deploying the whole piece on the computer. Okay, so then as we move along, again, Bokeh Building, in an ideal world, it was dark as construction by then. The rest of these are repetitive, same thing. So, I mean, it all comes down to a little bit of timing, some good luck with passing the bond, making sure there's capital projects funding. Sometimes the legislature, we get some more money into that, sometimes they take some away. We also talked about changing from super majority to simple majority, meaning if you had 50% vote plus one, you may be able to do a capital construction project. Which could be huge for this district. It's been on the docket many times, but it hasn't ever gained any traction, so, or not enough to put into a law. Anything else I haven't seen? Not really. I would like to thank the facilities committee, they put in a lot of hours in putting this together. We've had several meetings. There were a couple delays, because when it came time to talk about the cover play area grant, you know, that was four, five, or six, seven additional hours there. So, meeting every month, we can't, we can't have two months, because, you know, we lose... If we were meeting once a month, we'd kind of lose a month every time, you know. Something new would come up that needed to be addressed, because we need to stop and talk about that, so. Alan, do you want to add anything? Alan is on the facilities committee.
I think you covered everything pretty thoroughly.
Probably, excuse me, redundant. Any questions from the board?
On the 57 building, or 58 building, is there going to be any useful information from the last time we tried to do the, as far as the studies, architect?
Um, I would say useful, I would think you probably won't use the same architect. I think that might be useful. I'm going to get the cameras over there. We just, nothing I would want to comment on right now. I think we're going to have some good information here shortly, because OSPI has given a book up on what they saw. And you know. One thing I do like about Carter, who came out, he was, you know, really quickly responded when we were working on this plan, shot him several questions and said, okay, if you take an existing classroom space that's no longer existing, or we build a new classroom space, what's the timeline before it can count on OSPI as usable square footage? You know, nine o'clock at night, 30 years. So, I have appreciated working with it. It's called the Consolidated Services Group, and it's sponsored by ESP112, but they're all over the state. So, they are, they are there for you, and we don't get bills from them. I mean, they're just doing that to help validate the event that we may use them at some point in the future. He's come down to it three times, and we've never, never paid him anything. I do like that.
Maybe, so, if I had to go back on that, that sort of brought one thing to mind, which is that the whole facilities committee did tour the 1578 building for the first time, and that was really enlightening, I think, for all of us. We had Carter there as well, and he was extremely, as we explained, informative about what the options were. There were a lot of options I don't think we were fully aware of until we walked through that building with him. And one thing that really struck, I think, all of us, is just how big it is. There's a lot of space there, and I think there was real thought about trying to make the most of all of that space, because it's not currently used to its fullest capacity. That's one thing that I walk away with, is that there's a lot of potential there. And it's not, you know, it's not a teardown, you know, it can be worked with and brought up to code and standard, and be a really good functional building that's earthquake safe, which is one thing we've been really concerned about. So, and the other part of that was that our recommendation was to reach out to the, you know, the curriculum committee and say, hey, so what do we want to use this space for? You know, what kinds of classrooms do we need? Because it's really just one big shell that's got partitions in it, and those partitions can be moved. You know, when we're doing this work, it can be turned into all kinds of things. And so, it's going to be really important for the committee, the curriculum committee, to say, this is what we need space for, and then use that opportunity to make the most of that building.
Are the grandstands part of that still, or is that going to be too separate?
What he said, Alan, helping us, was he writing it. Because you do something on the other side, doesn't necessarily mean you have to modify the grandstand. But he did have a couple usable suggestions. If you notice on the grandstands, the main planks where you sit are pretty deep. Because like, what he said is, you could cut into those a little ways, so where like a wheelchair could, you know, back in. It's kind of like the concept in the gym. And he said, you know, you could get some seating there, but he said as a whole, he thought the stadium looked pretty solid.
Yeah, that was pretty much what he said, is that it is solid. That was the main thing. What we have to do there, if we touch the other side, he did mention it's up to the building inspector. And so, that's where it really comes down. They said, you know, we don't tell you what you have to do. We just give you the money. Your building inspector is going to tell you what you have to do in order to meet code. And it may be, you know, so the building inspector should come out, you know, meet with the school and try to work that out. And that can happen regularly at the local level. And it may just be that a, the biggest issue is fire code, and then if we do touch the inside building, we may need to do something to make sure that it's got a firewall between the two, so we don't have to, for example, sprinkle the whole stadium. But then the other fixes are pretty simple ones, like she said about making it handicap accessible, a couple little things to improve it.
For some reason, when I open this, you know, it's labeled correctly in the link, it goes to the facility. So, I'm going to grab it.
Are we ready for reaction on that? Or are you ready?
Four hundred.
All right. We skipped to item A, and there's a reaction that is necessary there, so we have motion. I move the board to approve the five-year facilities master plan.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second to approve the five-year facilities master plan. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, no one cares.
And here, you guys will have this on your iPads, or in your email. I probably could have brought it up, but I didn't do. I'll just speak up.
We're going to find, eight, eight, one, roll.
Yes, yes. It's labeled right in the link, but it goes to the other... It's labeled right in the link, but it goes to the other.
Well, the other one, maybe that's, maybe it is.
I didn't try that, but I don't know how it can stay in the title, because that's where I keep it from the end. It's that word probably in there. It might be, yeah, I can't remember. You know, here. Please, please. So, yeah, this policy, um, this one we've probably been working on for about five months. And our current health and wellness policy is pretty dated. I think it's about paragraphs or two long. This one's quite long because there's a lot of tie-in to competitive standards. And so, um, basically, you know, why I want to point this out is there are a few changes to how we're currently doing our business that will impact some impacts of the classroom. And so I want to make sure everybody is aware of those, and think about whether or not we'd like to adopt this policy. You know, as a whole, um, health and services recommends that kids get about sixty minutes of physical activity a day. They want to need a day to all football games, they often have that play sixty commercial. So there is some research behind that. So, in an effort to update our policy, and also it was part of the covered playground grant, that we had to have an active wellness committee and update a policy. So, one thing did sort of drive another, we're not necessarily sorry as a result of it. But we established a wellness committee. Uh, we have staff, our school health professional, counselor, principal, myself. We have parents, food service. The one thing we did, what did we do, was involve the students. Obviously, the students are an important factor of this. It kind of rushes so that we can get going on. And once we started, we should have had a student, and be involved in. We do go forward because a lot of this is more to talk about menus and food choices and what our kids may or may not like to eat. But as a whole, because we are a, a school district who receives federal funds, we have to strictly follow the federal standards in the meals. That's why you get your four chicken, chicken nuggets in there, and, you know, hot dog and, probably a meat dog, and your whole meats wrapper on your burrito, and, you know, your fat-free mayonnaise. I guess those very agory details, but, you know, we have to be in compliance with that to, um, get the funding. And, you know, something we may explore later is, we want to stay in compliance with that, and it is one thing that works. But that's not what this is about. So, the, the first part of the policy just kind of gives a general background of why we're doing this, what we hope to accomplish. It lays out the standards you have to comply with. Even if your food service is selling under snacks, because it's run through food service, they have to meet the dietary standards. However, we did exercise our full authority in after-school events and fundraisers. So, there is no law that requires us, when it's an after-school, you know, you might see the kids shoot a three-pointer, they hit their Mountain Duke. We didn't want to delve into the world of ASPD and fundraisers. There are many, still be Christmas food fundraisers and cookie dough, pizzas and all of that. But if it's, if it's part of the food service, we're kind of locked in the bun of how the standards. One thing we want to share and try to emphasize is that especially in our elementary, that the lunch period follows recess. In a lot of schools, it's flip-flopped. And I remember when we were kids up at Rossburg, we would scarf down our food as fast as we could. Because the faster you ate, the more recess you got, and if you timed it right, you'd get forty-five minutes. So, I didn't care about food. You know, we're like, we gotta get to the game. And so, they are trying to change the order of, of meals. We are really trying to discourage sharing the food because there's so many kids now with allergies and different things. And that's sort of a fun thing to do at lunch, you know, trade food. So, um, we want to discourage that as much as possible. You guys ready?
Yeah.
Okay, that'll probably be about five minutes, maybe ten. Let's see. Food outside. Now, some of these are going to be big changes if we adopt this, but, you know, the committee believes it's the right thing to do. We want to try to move away from food as rewards. So, you know, you didn't get a job on your test, you didn't suck it, or you didn't go to your answer. Now, we're not talking all the time, and a lot of our, our school rewards are food-based. And so we were thinking, okay, is, how about maybe you get ten minutes more of physical activity or recess? But that idea is best on the sweets and more on the physical activity. So, if we adopt this, we, as a district, will have to work with parents and try to live with that. In elementary schools in particular, you know, there's a, a party every month because you have your Halloween party, your Christmas party, your St. Patty's Day, Valentine's Day. And then when there's a birthday, there's a cupcake, it's in the cookies, and somebody signed up for a party. And we don't want to like be the rich and silver party, but what we were thinking is maybe you can have one of those a month. But your other things could, you know, the reward system could be, okay, you mentioned eating goals. Instead of the sucker, you get like a little friendship present, or ten minutes more of recess, or something like that. We think that might create a love for some parents because, you know, the cupcakes come for the birthdays. But what we're also calling is, and I was, okay, not everybody's mom is able to, or dad, to do the cupcake. And it sometimes creates a, I never get my cupcake. Or some parties, birthdays are in the summer. So, just, you know, try to be aware of where you would have this going. It's for the right reasons, but it is a change. Also, some districts up in the middle of Harvard, they don't allow any home baked foods to be brought into the school. In fact, our schoolers were shocked that, that we still allow that. And that, you know, that's something else that we need to be thinking about, too. We don't have the new draft policy right now. But, you know, we don't know how it's cooked. There could be peanuts, peanut oils, different things in there. Might not even know, you know, it could have just been something on the counter. So. I know. Uh, the other thing we're trying to get at is more physical activity breaks. Especially like right now, we have our kids heavy intestine. They're testing sometimes two, two and a half hours a day. So we're trying to implement, okay, it's a ten-minute physical activity break. One thing that could, um, come as a challenge is at times recess is instituted as a punishment for kids not doing, or lack of recess is instituted as a punishment for kids not doing their homework. Well, this policy would go against that because we want kids to have that physical activity. Oftentimes, the kids who are most disruptive in class need that physical activity break the most. So, we know it will require some alternative systems in place of, okay, what are we going to do then for the ones who don't do their homework, or backtalk, or whatever? So, uh, we see it as a work in progress, but we think it's a step that the district needs to take. The other thing is, uh, physical activities such as running laps, push-ups, et cetera, will not be used as a form of punishment. Just like, we don't want to say to kids, you have to go read five hundred words because you are naughty. Because we don't want reading to then be associated with punishment, just like physical activity to be associated with punishment. Clock's going out, it's making more. Um, the rest of it's kind of just basically set up a policy. It has to be monitored, you need to do surveys, you need to work with your parents, your teachers, your kids. Find out about healthy meal choices kids want to eat. And, um, I mean, that's kind of it in that show. It's about virus education, so a lot of this kind of talks about applying to the federal standards. But I have pointed out the things that I thought would be, um, you know, kind of perhaps sensitive. Things on the committee, Karen, if you guys have anything you want to add with what we talked about?
It's a draft this month, but I, I would, you know, already maybe think that or think, I mean, back for a few on that.
Okay. I already, please, please approve something on contracts, we kept some of our teachers.
I'm giving board approves something on contracts for teachers that need summer camp school.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to approve something on contracts for teachers that need summer camp school. Any discussion? All the favors, yeah?
Aye.
Of course. Motion, Chris. H C, approved resolution delegating authority to W I A K.
I move board through resolution two oh one six dash five dash one seven, delegating authority to W I A K.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution two zero one six dash five dash seven, delegating authority to W I A K. Any discussion? All the favors, yeah?
Aye.
Of course. Motion, Chris. I don't think the approved use of school facilities and transportation for summer athletics and student clubs.
I move the board through the use of school facilities and transportation for student summer athletics.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the use of school facilities and transportation for student summer athletics. Any discussion? All the favors, yeah?
Aye.
Of course. Motion, Chris. D F, approved home trips for school programs and athletics. Move board through home trips for school programs and athletics.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve home trips for school programs and athletics. Any discussion? All the favors, yeah?
Aye.
Motion, Chris.
We have some special meditations.
Special meditations.
I just want to say a little thing. I googled boots and drum corps, and that is what came up. I thought, well, okay, why not?
What? Well, board, a little crazy people, as in? Um, what you're about to hear is, uh, fourth, fifth graders, and sixth grade groups. They make up a group that I call Pootopia. I don't think they like that too well, so eventually they'll come up with their own name. Usually, most schools in the state start their band games in sixth grade. Last year, uh, I started the fourth grade in January. And so last year's fourth grade, one up here?
Yeah.
Okay, go over there, they use. Last year's fourth grade, or this year's fifth grade. And I, I recorded them. And I have some close friends that were band directors in the state, in Montana as well. And they called me a few toy states where they heard the floats because they were so jealous. Um, usually, kids at this age, they play, um, merry holly lamb or hot cross buns. But, uh, yeah, but they're, you know, that's sort of cool, you know, a lot of that. So, anyways, I'll play three short pieces for you. And, uh, and just to certainly want, want the banners we have, having this small school starting, uh, banner at an appropriate age where we're feeling kids are mature enough, especially in fourth grade. And let's hear it for you, bud. Hold on. Uh, you ready? Hold on, hold that far. Can I get a push? Push it. Oh, just in here. Oh, you ready? Ready, and go. Okay, ready? Do you want to introduce the song?
Oh, yeah, sure. Um, it's like "Over the Rainbow" from "The Wizard of Oz."
A few years ago, I remember we had a violin group and one saxophone that, that played, uh, Christmas stuff. And we'd also go down to nursing homes and play for the residents there. Uh, it's easy for Christmas order in the spring, playing music that they recognize. And anyway, all those people graduated and moved on, so this group will be taking their place starting next year. And, uh, so we're trying to build up our repertoire to have at least a good thirty minute show. Nursing homes, about thirty minutes is about all I can give. So, so we're almost there. Okay, go ahead. And before we do our last piece, we just, I think, I have to, I want you to pass on to everyone that they can't wait to get into the new facility, my coach. Okay, earlier this year, it seems like more than a year ago, um, we had a chance, I did have a chance, Lisa had a chance to apply for a grant for, for some drumming from the Temple Foundation. And, uh, received the grant, and, uh, we got some drums. It seemed like it's just a, a long time to get the drums, and also pick the orders. They did order a lot of hard, and we sent them to them. But everything's here. Um, and, uh, what we want to do is just give you two minutes, two words on what we got. And the number of things to be done, this could be a standalone entertainment for halftime shows, or even though I went to the Dallas High School, we could also have, uh, a middle school, elementary school marching band. As long as they play something simple, blow their butts off, good drum line, also really nice. Here we go. Ready?
Okay, I'll just, we go through these rules there with the youth camp. And you know, we have the forty day summer school program that goes out the very next day after school's out, so it's Monday the thirteenth. Alan will be wrapping up his time just on the fourteenth. Karen, I think I only have one more back. We've, you know, better, they swapped out, so she'll be taking him in his days. Cover it off there. New principal, now here to run, maybe on board, Jamie Laurie Klein. Um, two students graduated last Friday. I apologize for the absence of that, but this is the date was changed. More the older the means. It happened, so we missed it, but, um, it was a great, great moment when kids graduate and learn to see their faces. Rudy recently presented at the tech conference. Alan was here the last morning. My friend, this stuff is going to happen, and it was really like, it was a question, it was in Chris Center's tech, so that went well. Um, we have a lot of sports activities going on right now. All of our teams are still alive and either preparing for district or heading into another district game and/or state. So baseball, softball, and track. Baseball, state, they've had a couple rounds of playoff games, only going into, starting state tournament on Saturday, but they had a course as the fourth seed. They were playing Wilson again, if I remember. Pause it if I forgot. They played first seeding and then they're playing again. So there was some obvious strategy in our games going into seeding, because we knew we were going to play a team again. Not getting into all of what that was, but, um, we have a good defense. That'll be Saturday. Softball plays again on Wednesday. They opened district last night. Little win. Uh, they play against Wilson on Wednesday. Uh, district track here Thursday. Um, recently had a Pacific Science Fair here, and I've seen some pictures on Facebook. We've had tons of field trips. Kids getting ready to go or going everywhere. Mandarin update, so we're still working with Scott Shenmei-Zhu to, uh, review his paperwork. We've done everything on our part as a school. The Chinese department has approved it, counseling for our own state department. So hopefully we have an answer pretty soon, because if that doesn't come through. We do actually have a couple backup plans. It's interesting, I was just on chat, but we didn't go back. We have several openings to be posted, and on average, we are having zero to two applicants per open position. It's, we are at a crisis. We're not the only school. We've talked to our neighbors in the local harbor, same situation. They are just not out there. There were three career boards in the last two months. But people went and said, there's just no one here. They thought it was just bad timing, but, you know, all this talk, we've heard about teacher shortage and the enrollment down in teacher prep programs. We are experiencing it is a reality. Interestingly enough, although we've had zero to two applicants, the most job that we've had open, that we've had applicants for is for Chinese. We've had three or four applicants out of Portland that have put in, we've interviewed some. Well, no, it's too far. Contact other people that we met at the career fair, but they're finishing up their masters. But we've just, today, got two, two applicants, so we're going to interview those folks. Ultimately, we're looking for a long range solution, you know, rather than borrow the teachers from China. But even if we borrow, there's two different kinds of visas. There's H one and the B one, one's more long term. So even a lot of these people who are out of Portland right now are on, they're on a visa, but it's a little more permanent than the kind of visas that we've been working with through our programs. So we're hopeful. It has been confirmed though that we are getting one college board teacher. So that would need to be in addition to Scott or one college board and one from the T C, so critical languages program. Which if you remember, those are twenty hour a week teachers, but if we lay everything out right, they can actually cover two grades. So we should be in good shape. If something should not follow through on Scott, we have asked the college board and the T C to be full for additional teacher. And/or it's possible we could prioritize other folks that would want to be in. So, um, but for example, Spanish physician, we've, we've had a Spanish opening posted for two years and we have had zero applicants, zero. And I have emailed people, you know, we, we go to the job fairing, sometimes there's a roster of who attended and what their fields are and what their field of study. And just no response. I mean, just nothing. We keep trying. So that's just very genuine, but part of this conversation is very genuine. Um, these are just a few pictures from kind of what's going on. Softball did end up second in the league. They won their district opener, like I said. This is a picture from senior night. I don't know how often you guys go to our kids' page, if you do, but you really should, and there's a ton of pictures of our kids' activities. Down below, we also have track senior night. Baseball boys were first in the league. And our, our seventh and eighth grade boys also did very well in track this year. The boys were, eighth grade boys were league champs and the second grade boys were second place. So lots of good athletes, uh, coming up, so we're excited as we start state and continuing district playoff. This is just all me. Budget status could be, could be, really opens. I guess I'll just go to the bottom line. And balance says at the beginning of May, uh, one million, five hundred and twenty thousand. This is going to be something we've talked about in a workshop a while ago, our fund balance and possibly moving some money over to general fund to help with the covered play areas slash gym, multipurpose room, whatever it's. Eventually, the money that end up being, um, nothing really sticks out learning here. We're on track. The one thing that we noticed, and I, I mentioned this before, are our expenditures. The areas where we're way, way below is because this is where we build it for capacity for grants. So there's much more that we said we might take in and we actually do. It's just, we have to have the capacity to take it in, should we land a grant. And when I talk about the covered play grant, that would not be part of these expenditures, either general fund. That's a separate kind of thing because it's called capital, because you're adding construction. Can you open a snapshot? Paintful of Pam Jones in their study. CBA at this time of year does drop off a little bit. A lot of the kids are finished by May. We already have, I think, about twenty-five kids ran in various stages in the moment for next year. I think they project thirty, forty-three, forty-three. So it should look a lot like this for next year, our CBA. We do have to have a shout out for Acosta School this year. Uh, we were on a track lead and our bus got back through too, but it must have been another school district, not Acosta. And broke out our taillight, so there was a little bit of a panic. What are we going to do? Because we didn't want to put kids on the bus and take them home with a broken taillight. We were like, who do we? And so I called up there, the district office, they got ahold of their transportation guy. He went out there and fixed the light, built the other district, so we didn't have to send another bus up there to get kids home. Especially given the current situation. So I called up there and thanked the gentleman, we have a line. You know how those guys are, no problem. So, you know. Men a few words and, you know, we did the same and we, you know, it hits, it comes full circle. But thank you to Acosta School this year. We had our special entertainment. And for the not put a line, I, I do want to give some updates on the covered play area. These every day, there's some kind of, uh, new development on that. So, um, maybe not so briefly. We put out what's called RFQ, or Request for Qualifications for Architects. Uh, I've also made some phone calls to notify some other architects about our Request for Qualifications. And either people who've been recommended from other school districts or E S D, or well, or schools of similar types of projects. We've had a couple people suggest, so I followed up on getting a soils engineer to look at the soil in our two spots that were kind of targeting construction. And also, um, Gene Strong is on my superintendent's advisory board. When they did the fire call on Grace River, they started digging down the ways. I don't know what the official term is, is, but you know, hit sponge soil. So that had to be all dug down and put rock in there, compact it, and, you know, with an unforeseen cost. So we thought it would be us to get a soils engineer out here and dig some test holes, so to speak, and have a look at it. Now, one would think, but it doesn't always stand to be that. If we put something right out here, we already have something right here, and this has been here for years, it's probably okay. But I'm having them give me a quote on the cost because, you know, you don't want to start on it and have to spend a hundred thousand dollars and you won't dig it all down, get your pit run and crush rock or whatever you have to do to get it, you know, stable on the surface. They do estimate that when they build a steel building, the support beams, you know, might have to go down over six feet. So, you know, we have a history of clay soil around here. Kind of the same goes for the other hospital site over there we talked about. You know, one time there was a house there, so you kind of want to be digging down to know what you're hoping to be getting into. I stand corrected, I believe someone asked me about seconded drain field. There was a little drain field out here. So now, most drain pipes aren't huge, so it hasn't created a great big premise. But, you know, you want to be sure you're not building on top of a former, you know, pipe or something. So we're probably going to do some digging around here to make sure, you know. For sure, you can't be on top of the tank. If you have, you know, four inch pipe or whatever, it's not the end of the world, you're going to dig below that anyway. But you kind of have to go, you know, what's in the ground. One of the things we come across when we were talking about is how are we going to get someone to design this and get it built and not spend a ton of money in the process? Is the concept of what's called the design build, where you can work with one person that can design it and then they handle the bid process. So it's kind of one step rather than having an architect separate, then going out for bid, then getting a builder and going from there. So that was kind of what O S P I suggested, but upon further review, you can only get the design build waiver essentially for projects ten million dollars or more. So that would, so that's out. So next steps, I mean, I guess there are several. Every day is, I'll give me the next step, honestly. We had architects out here, the water company, plant a soils engineer, O S P I, building inspector, probably some I forgot, but. Um, so the Request for Qualifications for Architects would be the twenty-fourth. At that point, then theoretically, we review them. We interview whatever selected fee we want to out of that group. It could be phone or in person, the E S D suggested phone. Then you choose one you like. It can't be based on cost, it has to be based on qualifications, references to the projects. Then you negotiate a contract with them. There is a fee that, or there's a max fee that architect can charge. And it's for the project we've talked about, it's around seven or seven and a half percent. Then you negotiate with them, and then at that point you have to decide, okay, is it architectural? You'll also be an engineer. Is an architect, you'll be able to draft plans, you know, accurately enough so you can go out for bid. Originally, when we started in this and in our early discussions with the facilities committee, our plan was, let's get a steel building, the biggest one we can get. And then, you know, fill it in later and try to at some point turn it into a, a practice gym or a multipurpose room or something. Well, you have to plan those things in advance because it's a lot harder to go back later and say, oh, well, now we want to put some insulation in this. Oh, we didn't put any conduit in or prepare it for electrical. So it's, you can't just go out for bid and say, oh, I want a steel building. Because that has to all be pre-planned out and spec'd out so that everybody who's bidding is on a level playing field, apples to apples. Because one company might bid, you know, or give you a quote for a certain gauge of steel. There's the standing seam type of, you know, roof. There's different thicknesses, so it's a lot bigger than what you would have thought. But once you get it all spec'd out, then you go out for steel bids and, you know, typically it goes to the lowest bid, but not always. You know, there's other things that can weigh into that. We also had the D and D come out and look at the two, two sites for now. With one being right out here, the other one being used to be on the playground, for the possibility of being overpart of the playground. And they said that the cheapest option would be this spot because there's enough capacity in the main breaker down there where you could run a line basically off of that main breaker. Not the big green box that's down there. They said that, that won't work. They said it's four eighty and that doesn't mean a whole lot to me, other than it wasn't a nut. But he suggested you could come right off the main panel under the school. What they didn't like about over here, they want more expensive because there are some overhead power lines over there, just, just beyond the edge of the playground. So if we do anything over there, they're going to want you to bury those lines, which I think is a good idea anyway. But instead it would be cheaper to do it here and go off, put, run a line off of the box or whatever, determine what you wish. They haven't sent us the, what it estimated cost was, but they said the P U D would have very little involvement in that case because you would have an electrician then run a line off of the existing panel. And we should have enough existing load for, uh, electrical capacity, basically. Um, as far as cost estimates, you know, it's nothing scientific because they haven't seen a drawing or anything like that. But we've, we've had at least four or five different architects I've talked to, just kind of giving them a broad idea and a couple contractors. And they're saying anywhere from seven hundred thousand to a million five. So it's totally wide open, from steel to wood to twice as much as we were thinking to half as much as we were thinking. But because it's state funds, you just can't go out and say, we're going to purchase this, this steel building kit from Armstrong Steel and we're going to hire this company to put it up. So it's, uh, it doesn't work that way. Have more information on that every other time. We have workshops at that point. Any questions on any of that or maybe they might be trying to find out there? I have a phone call now, but. Yeah, I can hold in that part, then. I know it's a lot for Sophie, and probably you guys have done some of these things, but this is a new world to me. Okay, well, going on then, if we are going to do a third superintendent evaluation this year, this will be about the time we're gonna start getting on that, we're coming up on June. I know the policy or procedure talks about superintendent having a opportunity or something like that, I think is a way of, so I want to ask if you guys are gonna deal with our one? And if so, we need to pick a date for that.
Well, first of all, you are working.
I'm, I'm. I'm quite with that. You know, there's a lot of things going on.
She might be pushing a lot, going home right now, but you should be addressing the unique subject. Sounds like we're agreeing.
Yeah, it works. So we have scheduled a board workshop on the 25th at 9:00, 9 o'clock. Assuming that's the works, I don't really think, at the library reserve. The purpose of that is to have a planning on to decide how much, if any, money can move from the general fund to capital projects. I would suggest, whether we go ahead with the covered play area or not, we still move money over there, because we're going to be doing something, whether it's put to that or pitch a building. And then any of the other things that could go wrong. We can talk about that more, but I don't think we should move at least 500 for us, because my recommendations, I mean, that's what we would do. Also, June 4th graduation, big day coming up, some folks here, an audience. That's 4 o'clock, and I've kind of already sent information on that. I heard all of you that are being there, so usually what we can get, I call about 3:40, 3:45, and then he walks in with them. Oh, just a little bit of looking ahead. So it's July that we adopt for the budget, so we've been working on that. And last year, we did a special meeting, one hour before the regular meeting. Did that seem like enough time? I think it's about 40. Yeah, I know. So I booked you guys, it was your first meeting, you weren't even sworn in yet, it was like, sit here, listen to this, and then sit here to prove it. So, I mean, we can set it at 5:00 or 5:30. I guess I could, I don't know, 5:30. I mean, some of you guys. Although I can just look back and see, like, probably in your head, think about 5:30 or something, maybe 3:00 of July. Also, it's coming up on the time for board goals. Usually the way it works is the board sets its goals. I set mine, then the board sets its, so kind of all in a row. Last summer, we had a Patty Wood come, and that was in June.
Nick Wood was there, but not yet awarded.
Right. So that's something we do every summer. Typically, maybe use a consultant for that, it doesn't have to be that way. You know, send me something on the last year's goals, if we, you know. Would like to try to get some clarity on that, because I would have to try to find a consultant. Um, yes, looking for a direction, if you want me to start coming around, or if we just want to spin our own thing. Maybe take some things out of the facilities plan. I'm in the process of putting together a parent satisfaction survey, and I want to get that out within a couple weeks, so, you know, there might be some data there to, it might be suggested, help set the goals. We'll overlap, I mean, some of the things, obviously student achievement, we want that every year. You know, but what does it look like? Are we focusing more on math, English, and we don't have those results yet? You know, they're taking their tests right now.
Well, you know, I've been in those kind of meetings with facilities, it's been Patty Wood all times, and you have to, I felt like we got something useful out of that.
Oh, yeah, I think so. And I think also we've come a long way with our planning since then.
Yes.
And I'm not so sure it's gonna be as valuable as it was previously. But I agree with you, we always get something out of it.
I won't be thrown out another reminder if I don't hear back, and you guys, get back to me, or I'll just doggone it.
Okay.
Doggone it. Okay. I think we're gonna be useful.
Yeah, it is. I have 11 board member reports and future candidates.
Not bad considering all the.
I'm probably, Saturday is the man's 80-day present with the deeper relief call. Thursday, that's a little, I'm pretty.
Why do you hold it on the yellow? I don't know why that brings relief like that.